Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We'll begin the Board of Selectmen meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'm glad you can make it. And the weather has got a little bit colder than we expected, but our crews are out there icing the roads as we speak. I want to be...
De-icing.
De-icing.
It's a whole new era, darling. A whole new era.
It's a whole new world.
It's not security.
Out there spraying water. Well, now we begin with a joke, so.
And now everybody's loosened up. We'll go on to the... I know. We'll go on to the... Oh, stop. Just stop. We'll begin by accepting the resignation of Lisa Hevner, Democrat, as a selectman for the... As a regular selectman of the Board of Selectmen effective January 11, 2015. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd ask for a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Chris Kelly from the Board of Education.
Let's move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a motion to accept Chris Kelly's resignation from the Board of Education.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to the exciting part of our meeting. We will be appointing Christopher Kelly as selectman for the Board of Selectmen with the expiration date of December 7, 2015. He comes with the unanimous recommendation of the Democratic Town Committee. I'll take a motion to appoint Chris Kelly to the Board of Selectmen with an expiration date of December 7, 2015.
I will move that with our sincere thanks, Chris, for willing to step up and join this merry bunch of six. And we look forward to... We look forward to working with you for the remainder of the term here, so welcome.
Thank you, Sean.
And a whole hearty second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carolyn, can you please come up and swear on the newest member of the Board of Selectmen? Take some pictures. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm gonna get a picture. Okay. Chris Kelly.
I'll do that.
Wait.
Thank you for your presence.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to the law, your duties as a member of the Board of Selectmen to the best of your abilities so help you guys?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Can you read every proclamation?
It is the whole...
And one more proclamation.
Yes.
Proclamation, long-winded records.
And that's how we welcome you. I want to officially welcome you to the Board of Selectmen. Chris brings his substantial background in public services, both a former member of the Board of Selectmen and, five minutes ago, a former member of the Board of Education, serving as their Vice Chairman. He has also been a past Chairman of the Town's Public Safety Committee and has served on both Personnel Committees of the Town and the Board of Education. No question, he's ready to go day one, and Chris will be taking over all my liaison and chairmanship assignments, so I thank you for stepping up to do that.
You're welcome.
And you have a meeting tomorrow night and Wednesday night.
Yes.
I look forward to working with you, Chris, and the full board, as we turn to the town's business to work to deliver a fair, compassionate, open, and effective government together. I've already started working on the budget with town staff and look forward to thoughtful deliberations with you, Chris, and the full board of selectmen as we go forward. Your opinions matter. The public's opinions matter, and we want to hear from you about issues or concerns that you may have. Please feel free to contact us, any of us, at any time. We look forward to working with you. I want to give Chris an opportunity to say a few words before we move on.
Thank you. Well, Lisa, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to work with you as you step up to your new responsibilities. And to Sean, Cheryl, Nancy, and Mike, really looking forward to working with each and every one of you, and appreciate the generosity by which you've accepted me onto the board. And finally, I really should thank my wife, Sharon, who actually agreed to this.
We're all thanking Sharon.
Thank you so much.
But as you know, it does take a full family to really embrace this role as well as the Board of Eds. So, you know, nothing... You know, we all have a lot that we're really proud of in Simsbury, and nothing happens by accident, you know, whether it's having a great downtown or a great school system or having a lot of recreational activities. You know there's a whole world of people underneath the boards that are, you know, working tirelessly over years to make that happen, both staff as well as volunteers in the community. So my commitment to you is to try to be a good partner with you and really a good steward to all of those efforts that are being done by so many people.
Well, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
And I'll just take a quick three-minute break to eat some delicious cookies.
We're gonna have that on the agenda every time.
Start right away.
I took a g... Cookie break.
We begin our Board of Selectmen meetings with public audience. We welcome your comments at all our Board of Selectmen meetings. Because our meetings are formal and usually contain an extensive agenda with items to conduct the town's business, we do limit comments to five minutes. For those who feel they need more time or want to discuss issues or concerns, we welcome your input and are happy to meet with you further. Just call my office to schedule an appointment or send an email. I feel I speak for the entire board in saying that you may reach out to any of us at any time, and any of us would be happy to meet with you further. With that, we'll begin with public audience. We'll start this side. Mr. Kalishman?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Kelly. I stand here this evening, and it goes back a while, and it's getting to be disgusting. The 5th District is corrupt. It's been corrupt back to... Remember the old colonial relity? The corruption from New Burton? It goes way back to there. And now we're in the present, and I'm not going to waste all my time just going from item to item, but what I'm saying is, the onus should be on this board to rejuvenate the Ethics Board. Let's start things moving where we have a... Start to clean up the corruption that's going on in the 5th District, and it exists. Now, there's gonna be a lot of talk now about we need a new town manager. There's gonna be a lot of talk as we need various adjustments, one item being that we have a situation where, this evening, First Selectman Hevner became our First Selectwoman, and we have a Democrat joining... A new Democrat joining his team. The people voted for four Republicans to take over the reins of government. I'm still waiting for it to happen. It doesn't happen. The Republican have a ringmaster that votes with the Democrats. That's wrong. The people have sent a message. They sent four Republicans to sit on this board, and the Republicans are not fulfilling their elected duties. They ran as Republicans. You have... You're stamped as Republicans. You have an obligation to the Republican Party to adjust and create Republican programs. That's your responsibility. That's the label you ran on. And I look at this thing, and I look back over what's going on, and I see the corruption, the lies, the misleading statements, and people are reelected. I can't understand it. And it goes on, and it has to stop. Where is it gonna stop? And then we have... We have other points that should be pointed out. This fiasco, dog and pony show that went on for a month and a half. Now, Madam First Selectman, you know who I am. You remember me. I sat up with those personnel meetings each and every day. You had a personnel meeting each and every time. The First Selectwoman was not selected as an individual. The First Selectwoman was selected as a position. I sat there in her testimony after testimony. Sean Askem is a member of that board. You're a member. Testimony after testimony. The expert that came in that said the First Selectwoman is only working 5% of the time? He came in and he said that, and it's in the minutes. It's in the minutes. And they adjusted. And then, all of a sudden, for somebody to institute a policy that was recommended by the Personnel Board and then tar and feather a gentleman because he institutes it, and then when he does institute it, he gets no backing from his political party? Everybody starts to waver? And then, even though the people want change, what happens? The Deputy Selectwoman, she gets up and she gets excited, and she changes her vote after voting. If you're gonna... If you're gonna waffle, either get out as a Republican or stick to your guns. Are we gonna get change, or are we not? Now, this evening, and I'm gonna conclude with this, this evening, I've noticed that the First Selectwoman has transferred all her appointments to committees and such to Mr. Kelly. That's unfair. And I'll tell you why it's unfair. I sat here the day that Mr. Askem was relieved of his duties with public safety. I sat here. I listened to it. It was right here. If you wanna...
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
It's in the minutes. It's in the minutes. I know it's gonna hurt.
I'm happy to talk about this with you further if you'd like.
I know. But it was... It's in the minutes. And what I'm trying to point out here is that this situation came into fruition, and...
Thank you.
Now you're... You're just transferring. So you don't want change. You just want to keep the reins.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. I'm happy... If you want to discuss this with me further, I'm happy to meet with you during the week. Happy to. Anyone else for... Is there anyone else for public audience? Yes.
I'm Eka Scully. I'm here to represent the Simsbury Historical Society, the Martin Luther King in Simsbury Celebration Committee, and the Free Library. We're jointly presenting a program on Martin Luther King Day honoring Martin Luther King. I'm just sharing that information, that it happens at 2:00 at First Church. We have a guest speaker who is the daughter of Reverend Amos Brecken, who was a friend of Martin Luther King, and is sharing her family's experiences with Dr. King. So, hope you can join.
And that's Monday?
That's Monday. 2:00, First Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Coe?
Joan Coe, 26th and 25th Drive. We, the people of Simsbury, have seen our elected officials fail to lead and take responsibility for the recent debacle. Both parties are to blame for waffling on the most important leadership position, promoting it to our manager. The recent Charter Revision Commission was so conflicted that they produced a charter that assigns the responsibility of governance to the elected First Selectman and to the pseudo-town manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Section 502 duties of the First Selectman of the Charter states, quote, "The First Selectman shall be directly responsible for the administration of all departments, agencies, and offices, shall be in charge of persons and boards of the appointed First Selectman, and shall supervise and direct the same. The First Selectman shall be the Personnel Director for the town," end quote. Then the Charter continues to state, quote, "The First Selectman may, with the consent of the Board of Selectmen, appoint another town officer to the position of Personnel Director. Upon such appointment, the appointed town official shall perform the duties of the Personnel Director as described in this section," end quote. According to my interpretation of the Charter, the responsibility for implementing the task of Personnel Director is divided with conditional responsibility, not direct responsibility, to any number of entities. The verbiage in the Charter, as I understand it, is murky and should be rewritten. Under these restrictions, nobody takes responsibility for their decisions. Where does the buck stop? Following the new Charter designation and duties for First Selectmen, a consultant was assigned to decide the duties of the Selectmen's office and the salaries assigned to their tasks. It is interesting to note that the consultant was not asked to review the need for a town manager, although he had experience as a town manager and could have been directed to do so. Was this political decision, or was it self-serving? Although all consultants, given the task of looking into the need for a town manager, stated that Simsbury has a need for professional management, the position of town manager, both members of the Republican Party and Democratic Party had voted against having a town manager. Therefore, as a 50-year resident with a stellar track record of accomplishments, I will probably volunteer myself to become a candidate for First Selectmen in 2015 in order to promote the town manager issue and guide Simsbury into the future with professional management, which I have received a lot of encouragement to run for First Selectmen for both Democrats and Republicans who are interested in a town manager. I'll be contacting the Secretary of State's Office shortly for guidance and gathering signatures to qualify for the First Selectmen. If this board was sincere in their vote to reduce the First Selectmen's salary, are you going to vote to reduce the salary in the 2015 budget? I would like to inform you that Patrick McHugh, 6769 Laurel Lane, owes the town 127, 175, 26 in delinquent property taxes, and 2006, 2649 in delinquent sewer taxes. Patrick McHugh also has an illegal structure on his property that was built without permits. What is the process for collection of back taxes and forcing compliance with the zoning regulations? Dave Richman, the owner of 750, 570 Hop Meadow Street, has filed a lawsuit challenging the fines imposed on him for violating zoning violations after the Appeals Board reduced his fines from $30,500 to $18,500. When will this be resolved? As of January 5, 2015, Dave Fishman is being assessed $2,850 for 19 days of noncompliance of a freestanding sign, and the fines increase daily. Why can't Dave Richman play by the rules? There are two residents at Enough Farms Affordable Housing that are being evicted, one for nonpayment of rent and the other for violation of the lease. According to CHFA staff, the rents have been increased 2% every year across the board, regardless of ability to pay. Is this a violation of the ground lease? There are presently 33 active residential foreclosures in Simsbury. Who is responsible for overseeing the properties for neglect, which reduces property values in the neighborhood? I would like to inform you that I have not received an opinion from our town attorney determining whether 33 Canalski is compliant with an R15 residential designation. If it is asserted that the town attorney can give timely opinions, why am I waiting over six months for an opinion? According to town records, the Big Y purchased the property, the Wagner property, for $2,250,000. Several years of delaying closing costs to taxpayers, thousands of dollars in taxes and property values. Costing the taxpayers thousands of dollars in property tax. On December 13... 30th, there was an underage drinking party while parents were away at a home on Newberry Court where several children were arrested. Parents should be aware that the children will be arrested when the police are notified. Parents should talk to their children about the consequences of underage drinking. Has the town received financials from the Performing Arts Group for 2014 concert? And has the town received the financials from the International Skating Center? All of my comments will be posted on www.simsbury.com, www.simsbury.com topics, and also Simsbury Patch. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for keeping your comments to five minutes.
I try my very best.
Very much appreciated.
I'm learning how to talk fast.
I'm very appreciative.
Fast and furious.
Well done. Mr. Hooligan?
Chip Houlihan, 2 Somerset Lane. I'm here on behalf of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, wanted to provide an update on various things that are going on there that have some impact in the town. The Chamber, together with other organizations, including the Historical Society and Main Street, are looking to see whether or not we might be able to establish a town hub at the Historical Society so that we would have different groups working to benefit Simsbury in proximity to one another, thinking that there would be a synergy of services and benefits from that kind of close cooperation and coordination. And that is still being looked at with a number of issues, but it's one of the things that the new Chamber is developing. The new Chamber is also in the process of unveiling a new logo, which we're excited about.
You have it here tonight?
We do not have it here tonight, but we will...
Spence.
We will unveil it at the after-hours party that's gonna be held at Millwright's on January 21. The Chamber's adopted a policy to try and encourage non-members to attend, and for $10, you can gain entrance to that and see it on the first thing. Or you could come to the Business Leaders Breakfast, which will be held on February 6. It's a very popular event, and it'll be prominently displayed there. We've also contracted with a company that's going to help us prepare a welcome video featuring the town and its trying to induce people to move their businesses to the town of Simsbury. There is a marketing element to that, and it may be something that the town either would want to get into on its own or maybe use their services as well. But we're... We've signed the contract, and the process will be rolled out over the next few months. And I'd like to finally thank you. I saw there's a... The town is going to accept a charitable contribution, and we wanted to recognize one of our members who's been doing this for years. Billy Garrity, every year, makes a substantial annual contribution to the town pantry. He has done it consistently for at least a decade and perhaps longer. It... He does it without fanfare. His company is always there, always lending a support, and we'd like to recognize him for, you know, his understated contributions to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Anyone else like to speak at public audience? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations. The first one is going to be by our town engineer, Jeff Shea. The town of Simsbury is launching its publicly available geographic information system, which is commonly known as GIS. It's very exciting. It's a little technical. The GIS will provide geo-referenced information via the Internet to the public and includes such information as parcel information, property ownership, historical documentation of various properties, natural resource information, flood plain information, and other information on land use. So we're excited. I want to thank Jeff for your efforts on this. It is... You walked into this job a year ago and have really taken this on, and we're very appreciative. A lot of the data that you put out needed to be checked to make sure it was accurate, and we appreciate everything you've done, so.
Thanks a lot. As Lisa said, we've... Town staff's been working on this effort for the last year, and my predecessor actually had been working on it for many, many years before that. So a lot of the work preceded me, but what we tried to do is just scrub the data a little bit, make sure it was as accurate as possible. So we involved the Assessor's Office, the Planning Department, Public Works, myself. And it was kind of an interesting project. We met multiple times during the year, kind of gauged our progress, and hopefully have some good information that we can share with both public and business interests that may have some interest in getting high-level data or more detailed data of the town. I'm gonna give you a quick demonstration of the product. It's actually hosted by a third party, so we pay a small fee to have them host it and maintain it. We're gonna have them updating the data as we direct them to do that. So tomorrow, you will see a link on the front page of the town website, which is not there yet, that will basically give you a hot link to the site. And this is what you'll see. First thing we did is put a disclaimer up there. Like I said, we try to make the information as accurate as possible.
Lawyers are laughing.
It will not be 100% accurate, and we will get calls on this.
My heart's a disclaimer.
We did have the town attorney look at it, so it's been vetted with him, and everyone has to push the button to get to the site. This is the front page. I'm just gonna go through a few of the major features of the site. We have a map gallery, which basically provides maps that are of interest to people relative to land use, assessor's mapping. They're all downloadable, viewable, printable from their home computers. You can see there's different theme maps, and we're gonna expand on this as they become available. We're working on others right now. So, for example, such thing as zoning. So someone can just go in there and download that map. They can take a quick look at it, or they can actually go in and download it. So it's kind of a nice feature. The main feature of the site is the downloads or the interactive, where you actually go physically look at a map of the town through multiple tools. You can zoom into any site. And if you want to find out who owns that parcel over here on this particular street, you could just go Parcel Information, click on the parcel, and the owner comes up with some other links to things like assessor's cards, Bing, bird's eye view of the property. You can actually bring up a quick map of the property and print it on your home computer where it outlines the property and has all the assessor's information in it. So it's quite handy. I think it'll get a lot of use. This feature also... This piece of the site also allows you to add whatever coverages you want. You can actually look at FEMA information, flood plain information, and overlays all these different information... Data sets that allow you to actually, you know, build your own map. So here you have actual contour information, shows the elevations to the ground. You could overlay zoning. And then again, you could go up here and print that map with all those coverages on it. An eight-and-a-half-by-11 format, so it's very handy for, you know, various business users, obviously property owners. You could also search for a particular property owner by... Either by street, by parcel number, by property owner's name. So you can find all the Smiths that own property in town. So it's kind of interesting, and this is a little slow right here. Apologize for that. Let me just go back. I can go back to the beginning here. So, for example, you can come over to this little feature and go on Arrowhead Drive, and actually, it'll give you a list of all the property owners on Arrowhead Drive. And all the links are kind of in multiple places. Again, you could... If you wanted to see this individual's property, you could zoom right to the GIS.
I'll let you. Why don't you use my property as an example?
All right.
Instead of people we don't...
Where do you live?
Aspenwood.
Let me see if I can do that. So I just go...
No, you don't have to. I was just... Let that one go.
Did you pay your taxes?
Yes.
So what else can I tell you about the site? You also have features like report issues. So if someone sees that there's a problem with their parcel lines in the wrong place or whatever, they can actually click on this button. They can email directly to us and to our consultant with information on what the problem is. We're not gonna get to it today. We may not get to it tomorrow, but we'll at least have a record, be able to get to it when time allows. So it's kind of a nice feature. We're also creating layers right now that aren't active or not... Or will not be released to the public because of things like homeland security, issues with things like our sanitary sewer and storm drainage features. Those types of features, you don't want to kind of give out for security reasons, for terrorism and whatever. It's kind of a guideline that's presented. It's something that's been in play for the last 10 to 15 years. And utilities, for example, won't give out their information to the public. So these are... I just want to give you some quick... A quick overview of the system. Again, there's more to it than that. In terms of GIS data, there is a lot of analysis that can occur. This particular web-based system will not do that, but that data resides on our servers. So, you know, if somebody wants to do a higher level data analysis, they can do that with this data. So we feel pretty confident that the data's... So we feel pretty confident that the data is good. Again, we are, we will find issues with it, but that's normal through the course of a development of a system like this. So the intent is to really roll it out tomorrow. Again, there's been a lot of hard work from a lot of staff members, and we just want to kind of get your concurrence that you're good to do that, and hopefully we have a good result and a good response.
We don't actually need to take a vote on it, but unless the board objects, we'll go ahead and do that tomorrow. And do you also want to just highlight what's happening on January 21st?
Yes, and on the 21st, we're actually going to invite all the board members to basically a demo of the system to allow them to get familiar with it, answer any questions they may have on the operation of the system. We're going to tape that particular demo because we know most board members probably won't show up to the demo, but we'll be able to direct them to...
Not the Board of Selectmen members.
That's right. Committees qualify that. So they'll be able to go back and actually look at that, and hopefully that'll be helpful to them.
And the public will be able to watch it as well, for those who are interested. It's a wonderful addition. The Technology Committee, when it was formed, that was one of the highlights they wanted to get done. I know you presented to them, and all the work was done by town staff. So we greatly appreciate your efforts on that, and I'm happy to see that Tom is not the point of contact.
There's some alarming early drafts of this whole thing, but Jeff has done a phenomenal job with making sure that the data's been beautifully scrubbed to get us to this point. It's in very good shape.
Appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah, that's fine. I had to say, just, and long, long wait for it, she's sitting and long worked on, thinking back to my days on the Economic Development Commission. One particular person who's going to be thrilled is Lou George, who has also been on there forever and has been, you know, chomping at the bit to have GIS be part of what we can offer. And hearing a lot of, he especially is a land use attorney, going out, searching for information, what are the towns' offer, and how we can become more competitive economic, from an economic development perspective, that this is a huge boost for the town. And so I think as much as we can celebrate that and let folks know that it's there, and we'll get, I'm sure, a huge return on the investment.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you for that. We'll move on to the next presentation, which is the Ethel Walker Open Space Inventory. I asked Jeff to give us some, the board, some updates as we begin the new year. And in your packets is a memo from Jeff, which includes a summary of where we are with the Malone-McGroom Report on these existing conditions at Ethel Walker Woods, a forest management plan, recommendations and cost estimates for long-term and short-term improvements. We're anticipating that the final draft, we'll get an updated draft in two weeks. Jeff is going to be reviewing it with staff and various committees, and then the public, and then bring it to us. Jeff is going to coordinate a meeting with the Open Space and Culture Parks and Rec to incorporate their suggestions into the report as well, and I'd like, go ahead and add.
Just to recap a little bit, as everyone may not be aware, when we were in the process of purchasing the last piece of Ethel Walker's staff from various departments, just felt it was a good idea to reach out to a professional consultant that had quite a bit of information on the site to develop a master plan, basically an improvement plan, look at long, short-term improvements, look at, I guess, management issues, regulatory issues, access issues, protection of important features, natural features, and kind of work around all that. So the consultant has actually done a condition survey, as Lisa had mentioned. We're working up right now an improvement plan to hopefully be incorporated with some funding at some point in time, looking at the management, the regulatory kind of aspects of the property, and kind of dovetailing that into the Ethel Walker Master Agreement that was consummated some years ago. So we've been working closely with them, with the consultant, and with staff, and hopefully within a couple of weeks, we'll have a draft to present, get some input from various committees, and of course, the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions? Yeah.
So just a couple of quick things. Can we get a look at that draft when it comes in, just to kind of get an idea of what's coming, especially as we're starting to make decisions with the budget?
Absolutely.
And then two, can we give some sort of rough deadline that whatever comes back from Culture Parks and Economic Space is during the budget process? So, I mean, there's obviously a spend in there, so that would be good to know, you know, while we're figuring out capital, while we're figuring out all the other decisions to, even if it's not final, final, just give us an idea. So if, you know, if it's a $250,000 number, or it's a $50, you know, whatever the number is, so we've just got some context as we're making the budget decisions.
Absolutely. We're actually meeting this week internally with staff just to look at some preliminary numbers. We'll probably, in draft form, put a placeholder budget together, even though it won't be final, trying to prioritize certain things that we feel are important, and then provide that to you with the draft report.
And then my second, do we own it yet?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
We do? Beautiful. Good job.
Check.
Excellent.
Any other questions on the Ethel Walker property at this point?
No.
Okay, moving on to the future use of Dewey Farm property. This was, this came before the board a little over a year ago, and we voted to lease it to a farmer for a year because we wanted to consider whether we wanted to possibly sell the property or continue on with the lease. So the lease is up in March, so I'm bringing it before you to sort of get a sense. We're not going to take any votes today on this, but I, if this is something we are going to consider, there are a few things that would need to happen, and I didn't want to initiate that without getting a sense from the board as to the direction you want to take. But if this is something the board wants to consider, we will need to seek bond council's advice on the sale of open space, because when we bought it, we bought it as open space, and there was not in the contract a provision for the resale of the open space. So, and we did go out to bond for open space, so there are constrictions on that, and we need to clarify what those are and what our options are. Another thing we would need to do is refer to the Planning Commission for their consideration. We would likely need to obtain an appraisal. That's the recommendation of our town engineer, and that costs between $3,500 and $5,000. We do not yet have funds identified for that, but I've spoken with the Director of Finance, and he feels confident we could identify funds for that, and he would look into that if we ask him to. And finally, as we are sort of thinking about selling open space, we may want to consider a policy as to what considerations, and put a formal policy in place, because the selling of open space is not something you want to do randomly. We should have criteria and things like that. And I just, after we take comments, please invite you right now to let me know if there's anything else you think you would need in order to analyze this property in the next few weeks. So think about that, and I'll open it up. Start with Jeff.
Yeah, no, it's just this time of year is when we renew our agricultural leases, the farmers like to know what, where they stand, so they can get their seed and what have you. And, you know, it's, this again, it was back in last, I think, April, we talked about this, and we gave the farmer a short-term lease. He's been amending the property to improve the soils. He's very interested in staying put, if he could. Normally, it was a two- or three-year term we allowed these farmers, so we'd just like to get him an answer as early as we can in terms of where we're going with it. In terms of the property itself, you know, it's pretty well-established in the report, I think, what the development potential is of it. You know, we obviously don't have a position on it, but from a staff perspective, but certainly can provide any technical information you may need on the property.
I mean, we do not have this up for a vote, so I could put this on the next Board of Agenda. We would certainly like to give the farmer opportunity to come to the meetings if this is an issue we will be discussing. So this is just informational today. Yeah.
Oh, sorry, just in terms of the timing of, say, we said, geez, you know, we're interested to at least understand what our options are. So going to bond council, finding out what sort of restrictions might be as a result of the bond, finding out what the appraised value might be. We did give the one-year lease for the farming, but as we go through all this, would there be the opportunity for that farmer to actually farm the land for one more year as we work through this anyway? I mean, is that, just to get a sense of the timing of it?
I just think he would want to guarantee, obviously, that he could, you know, take his crop this year instead of implanting it and...
Absolutely. Yeah, a full season.
Making a change.
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
I think for me, I would want to know, as part of the entire open space plan, you know, if we were to sell off parts of it, would, what would we use the proceeds for? And could we put that back into our maintenance plan? Could we work this into the whole open space scheme, and is that possible? So if we were to have proceeds that were available, and is that something that we should put in our question to bond council?
Absolutely.
Because if that would negate some of the restrictions, then...
Oh, no, absolutely.
...we would be using the funds to maintain other pieces of open space. And I know we've discussed the whole open space plan, you know, in total, so I think this could be part of that.
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, if you want to update the board on what the Open Space Committee is doing in the classification of all open spaces, they've taken on this tremendous initiative. And I'd like to thank Jeff and Jerry Toner and Hiram Peck and the whole Open Space Committee. Do you just want to give a brief update on that? Because that goes, speaks to exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Obviously, is very interested in assisting us with evaluating the various properties we have. So they've gone forward and took our park department's inventory and basically expanding on that, trying to provide more data on each parcel in terms of how it was acquired, what limitations it may have on sale, its adjacencies, maybe its, you know, its quality in terms of habitat or natural resources, and kind of, I guess, come back at some point and make a recommendation or work with potentially an intern we've talked about in the forestry department at Yale or some other...
Trinity.
...specialty in that area to kind of pull all this data together, because it's very labor-intensive to kind of pull all that information together. Myself or the planning staff really, you know, do not have the time in the day really to dig into this stuff and stay committed to it. So they've reached out and kind of started with this inventory, building the database that we can use, and hopefully, you know, make some informed decisions.
Yeah.
Can we add that to our GIS? So we know.
One day.
If it's all pulled together.
Yeah.
But really, I just, you know, I think it's important that we at least have an idea about where the proceeds will be going.
That's the point of consulting with bond councils.
Yeah, so that would be something I would be interested in learning, or at least discussing.
Sure. Absolutely. Sean?
So as far as the bond council question, this bond's been paid off, right?
Yes.
So...
According to Joe, yes.
We did the other, we did Farrell's Farm, right? We didn't have to go to bond council for that one, did we? I mean, we used bond money from that.
This was a recommendation from town council?
I'm not arguing with it. I just, I don't understand, you know, I get it if there's a state grant where there's a clawback provision or, but bond council, I mean, we paid the debt off. It's ours, I'm just confused.
Yeah.
The actual history of the purchase is a little bit unclear in that regard. And I think there was a number of commissions were involved in approving it, and there's clear language indicating that it was intended to be used for open space. Bonding was done at the same time, but it's not, so I think that may very well be just to make sure that that box has been checked, but...
Because we wouldn't want the people who bonded us to come back and try and recover money, depending on what restrictions we have. So that's, yeah.
Obviously not, but I would say to them, hey, Joe, so, but anyway.
Go ahead. We'll bring you to those people.
Again, I'm not arguing that. I was just, I was interested in the question we were even going to ask.
It's a fair question. So I think this is just a, one of your diligence pieces.
Yeah, council has already initially reviewed the issue, and they felt that an additional opinion from bond council was needed in this issue, so...
Finally, I assume we know there's no grants or state money that was part of this? We're confident on that piece?
There's multiple sources.
Because that would be, that would be a concern as well.
We haven't really gone that far yet, to be honest with you, and dug into that in detail, but...
Yeah, I mean, as far as checking the boxes, I'd want, obviously, that one checked too, because the last thing I'd want is a call from the state saying, now we do want our way back.
Right. We haven't done a thorough investigation, because I wasn't sure what the board's direction was going to be. That's why, this is the beginning of the discussion, as we gather the information you need to make our decision.
Okay.
Yeah. And back to my timing question. When you talked about the Open Space Committee's work, I understand it is daunting, but do you, do they have a sense of when they might be completing that?
I don't have a good handle on that, to be honest with you. This only really came to be within the last meeting or two possibly.
Okay.
And I wasn't really up to speed on it, so I think Don Rieger's really taken the lead.
With Jerry. Jerry's here.
Right.
We're talking about the classification of the property. Jerry?
I'm the media.
Right.
The board's very involved.
So Don's pretty impressive. He's been working hard on it, I think, and, you know, he may surprise us, so I really can't give you a timeline. I don't know if you have a sense?
I mean, I think we probably want to try in the next month or two, you know, really get it, you know, get it tightened up. We're talking about the whole inventory.
Yes.
Yeah. And prioritize, I think, yeah, I think with what the work that Don is doing, what we're doing, I think hopefully we'll be more comfortable with that.
Yeah. And thank you to Don Rieger, because what he's doing is phenomenal and working. Jerry, thank you for coordinating with him, so very appreciative of that. The idea is sort of like our road maintenance plan. As we put together a plan, as we shift more from acquisition to stewardship, we sort of have to begin the process by inventorying what we have. And it's a long and hard process, and it's tedious, and appreciate everyone who's putting that effort in. But you're right, the purchase of Dewey Farm is part of that overall plan, and that's why we will need policies as we make considerations there, because the idea is not to diminish our open space, but to make sure that we are using it effectively. And some open spaces are just behind people's backyards, and nobody has access to it and stuff like that. So it's sort of prioritizing our needs as we have to steward the land that we have.
Just to be clear, we know all the parcels of land we own.
We do.
It's just a matter of character, categorizing what conditions and etc.
That's exactly, and what habitats are there, and what plants and...
Opportunities to connect with.
Right.
Off on their own, yeah.
Exactly. So it's just the very beginning of that process.
Yep.
So my suggestion to you is to come, put this on the agenda for our next meeting, and we may not even make a decision then, but at least to bring back what information we have. At this point, it's too soon to ask for an appraisal, because we don't have the direction from the board, so I won't be doing that. I'll talk with Tom about the advisability of doing bond council advice now, or whether we wait till after the next two weeks, depending on whether they'll do it for me or not. And referral to planning, we'll also wait until we're sure what we want to do. And well, Tom, if you could please ask Mr. Roy, I think he's the one who has the most contact with the...
He's right there.
Where is Mr. Roy? Oh, there he is. Yeah, Tom, if you could just contact the tenant and let him know that this is an agenda item, and we'll be thinking about it. No decision was made, just so that, I'm trying to keep our left hand talking with our right. Thank you for that. Is everyone comfortable with that approach at this point?
Yeah. I think this is, I mean, just having the Ethel Walker discussion, this Dewey Farm discussion, and what the Open Space Group is doing with inventory, I think it's all coming together nicely at the same time, and we can really take a nice look at all of our assets and figure out how to care for them.
And so we'll move on to First Selectmen's Report, because I do everything twice. I want to thank the community for their support and confidence in me. I'm honored to have been sworn in by my husband Jim, and with my children Rob and Mike with me. As you know, I didn't seek a run for this office, but I'm happy to take on this responsibility and work with this one. I'm very much looking forward to it. Since I've taken office, I've been busy. I have been meeting with department heads to review the budget process and begin the town's fiscal year '15-'16 budget that will be presented to the Board of Selectmen on March, honor before March 1st, which is in compliance with our charter. Our charter does require that, so we'll be following the dates in the charter. I want to thank all town staff for their continued efforts to provide excellent services to our residents. Second, I have, now that Tom is here, I've reviewed the town's storm preparations with Mr. Roy, and I am happy to report the town is ready to respond efficiently, and is actually responding efficiently as we speak. It has sufficient resources to handle the swinders and anticipated storms. Thank you to Tom and all your staff for your efforts there. Third, I have focused on continuing Simsbury's economic development efforts. I will continue to reach out to local business leaders, the Chamber and Main Street, over the next several weeks to discuss how the town can help encourage a vibrant and successful local economy. I wanted to inform the board that I have invited Oz Gribble of the Metro Hartford Alliance to attend our next Board of Selectmen meeting to discuss how Simsbury might benefit from regional marketing and economic development initiatives. This was a recommendation from our agriculture study, so we're just following up on that recommendation. I am also in a position to confirm that the Big Y purchase has closed, and we are currently waiting for information from Big Y on their timetable for moving forward. Fourth, I have reviewed all town union contracts, and will update the Board of Selectmen tonight in executive session on ongoing police negotiations. I thank the chief, town staff, police members for their professionalism, civil discussions about priorities, needs, and costs as this progresses. Most importantly, I want to hear from you, the residents of Simsbury, and I will be hosting a First Selectmen's Open House on January 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and I invite the community to come. Let me know what's on your mind, what issues matter to you, any suggestions you have. We have some exciting initiatives this year and projects coming up. We have some exciting initiatives this year and projects coming up and we're looking for public input on all of them, some of which you heard discussed tonight. During the month of December, we heard many comments from the public on the First Selectman's salary, and I will be assigning to the Personnel Subcommittee the task of holding at least two hearings on this issue to give the public an opportunity to more fully discuss and give input. Salary considerations may impact who will run for office and reflect on how much the public is willing to pay for the town's management and leadership. I thank Chris Kelly. I've spoken with him about this as the new chairman for Personnel for his willingness to engage the public in these important discussions. I have also had the opportunity to meet with leaders from the Farmington Valley Collaborative, which is, you know, Farmington, Avon, Canton, Granby, Bar Canstead, and I look forward to working with them on issues of regional concern. Finally, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And Chris, welcome again tonight as we hear from the public on these and other issues. Okay, moving on. Our first order of business is to approve tax refunds.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In your packet, you have a budget workshop date. It does list that I will be getting you the First Selectman's budget to you by March 1st. That's the deadline set in the charter. It's my intention to get it to you as early as I can on that, but that's the last date permitted by the charter. I believe Joanne checked conflicts with you and are, just want to confirm that these dates work for you.
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard.
Oh, you haven't.
I have. I reported a conflict that has arisen for me.
Okay. Do you, do you want to wait and to approve the date?
Yeah, I was going to ask about this because this.
Well, I've been very honored to be asked to be part of an advocacy group for persons with fragile X syndrome in Washington, D.C. for the Congressional Advocacy Day. And I would have to be there from the night of March 2nd through March 4th. I asked Mr. Cook if he had already scheduled any meetings for that night and he had not responded yet. He was going to discuss it with you and other scheduling.
All right. So why don't, I had thought this had been done, my apologies.
I might have missed an email, Lisa. We get like 11 billion of them.
Why don't we take a look at the schedule and bring this back to the.
Okay. Are there any other dates on here that anyone knows of a conflict? Because we'll keep those dates on. I'm concerned about delaying this too long because if we do need to extend it.
Absolutely. And I only asked if I wouldn't, you know, if you were going to have them every night that week, then maybe we would.
We are planning on having them every night.
So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so before that week? Then it'd be all day on Saturday?
And then we have three additional dates as necessary. That is getting us a little closer to our deadline. We do have to get this to the, do a presentation to the Board of Finance. I would like more than two days to prepare that presentation, but.
I was just hoping not to miss three presentations, so if there's any way that I can only miss.
And you're going to be gone what days?
One, two, second to the fourth.
Help me out with this, too. It says in total, this schedule offers five, seven evening meetings and two, one Saturday meeting? I don't understand.
Well, what we have is the four days, 3-2, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5.
Yep.
And then 3-10, 3-11 and 3-12. So that is seven.
That's seven.
Yeah.
Okay. And then only one Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just the one Saturday on the 7th.
Okay. I was confused because it says two and then it says one on print. I didn't know what that meant. Okay.
I am happy to catch myself up as needed. I just wanted to let you know for.
Do, for example, then, as far as the 3rd through the 6th, that would just be.
Absolutely.
The people would be moving on Friday.
I will review ahead, you know.
So that would be the 3rd, the 4th, the 5th, the 6th, the 7th, and then leaving Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday open. Are people comfortable with that? Anyone have conflicts with that?
I think that's good.
Chris, do you?
That looks fine.
So if that's acceptable to the board.
I got a, I mean, meeting eight days in a row is.
Brutal.
Brutal.
Brutal. And it's daylight saving, so we lose an hour.
And I have a day job.
Well, it's up to you.
I don't have my work calendar with me, so I, I mean, on my personal calendar, obviously, I'll change whatever I need to, but I don't know what my work calendar looks like.
I do think we need all these meetings because we do have that many staff departments to get through.
Oh, I agree.
The further we push it off, the less time we have of issues come up to get information for you. So that is the reason we always do our meetings right after the first. That's because of the way the charter works. It comes to you on the first.
Well, it sounds like we got to schedule them this way, so.
I will.
All right. So if there are no objections, I'll take a motion to hold our budget meetings on March 3rd, 4th, 5th and 6th in the evenings. Saturday, March 7th, all day. And then additional dates as necessary, Tuesday, the 10th, Wednesday, the 11th and Thursday, the 12th.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
My wife is opposed, but she can't vote, so.
Yeah.
In fact, I'm going to need someone's house, some couch to sleep on.
Yeah, I think we'll all be sleeping at the Simsbury Inn. Okay. Going on from there, we have a request for a license fee waiver. This came before us last year for the marriage license issue. It is brought to you by the Town Clerk and Tourism. It is to promote small businesses in Simsbury. Tourism, Main Street and the Town Clerk will coordinate a program to issue free marriage licenses the day before Valentine's Day and to present a grant package comprised of donations for local businesses to one couple who applies for the license February 13th. This is capped at $100 and the money will be found in a reduction of revenue collected through the Town Clerk's office. I have asked Tourism through Economic Development Committee to add this to their budget because it is, again, unbudgeted, although we did ask them to do that last year. So if they want to continue it, just put it in the budget for next year. It is only $100, so I'm bringing it to you for your consideration.
Just curious how it went last year. Does anyone?
Well, I think they had about five. Is that right, Carol? Less than five. Three?
Well, last year was the first year we did this and there was a lot of publicity. I think a lot of people, the businesses were very enthusiastic about it. Main Street and Tourism were very enthusiastic and we had terrible weather on February 14th.
Right.
It was worse than today. So we did have one couple who came that were getting married that weekend and they came in, they got their license, they've won everything. And they were thrilled. Honeymoon suite at Simsbury Inn. They had $100 worth of flowers from Horne's. They had one across the street, I can't remember any of it, but, you know, a place to do your hair and do your nails and all that.
They'll design, I think.
So they were very excited. They're very appreciative. And I think the Tourism and Main Street in particular want to continue this because of the publicity and to get people to come to town.
It's a great story to tell and they use it to tell the story of local Simsbury businesses. And that's the, it's not just a giveaway, it's actually to promote our local businesses, so.
And they were both over 60 years old, so it was kind of a nice, nice choice.
Who's going to say no now?
I am going to make that motion.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I dare you. All right. All right. Thank you for that, Carolyn. I appreciate you putting that together. Moving on to L Wagner Associates' proposal for services relating to the Small Cities Grant for the Simsbury Housing Authority. This came before us earlier. And basically what this is, the Board of Selectmen authorized the issuance of an RFP for a firm to provide technical services in connection with the preparation of the 2015 Small Cities Community Development Program grant on behalf of the Housing Authority. There is no cost to the town for this because it is paid only if the grant is awarded. This went through RFP, so it has gone through the proper bidding process and there's no cost to the town again because it comes out of the grant if awarded. So I would ask if there are any questions on this. We, this is, we have done this in the past.
Nope.
Appreciate their efforts to put this forward.
It's a lot of work. It takes a lot of town staff time. It takes a lot of work on the consultants and on the housing authority.
And we're hoping for success.
We are hoping for success. Yes. Okay. I'll take a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item H. This is acceptance of a financial donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming in the amount of $5,000 for Keep Simsbury Warm. As you know, this is a very generous donation and Chip, thank you for speaking to this. We are very grateful. They do this every year. It speaks to what a wonderful community we live in, that people step up when there's a need and they meet that need, and we are very appreciative. So I will take a motion to accept this donation.
With our thanks, should I move that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The town will send a thank you note to them on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Moving on to I, and again, we'll bring Carolyn up for that. We have a motion before you to adopt the following resolution in your packet so that the First Selectman may sign a grant contact with the Connecticut State Library. This needs to be done to qualify for a $5,000 Connecticut State Library grant for historic document preservation. I've confirmed with Carolyn earlier today that this project will not impact the current budget and there's no requirement for matching funds. Carolyn, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
Actually, the funding for the state, this particular grant from the state library comes from user fees that are paid into the town. So when people record records on the land records here and all over the state, there's a surcharge and part of that surcharge goes to the state library. And the state library takes a portion of that piece and they created this fund where towns can apply or town clerks can apply for grants for preserving historic documents or doing things in their, in their offices. So basically, it's sort of money that's kind of gone around and we are taking advantage of the fact of having it come back to Simsbury and restoring some of our records, making microfilm, checking microfilm of older records that has, was made on acetate film and now we may have to re-microfilm, put it on polyester film so it lasts longer and all that kind of stuff. So that's sort of the background of it.
Now, thank you for taking this initiative and we love things that cost the town nothing and recapture money that we're giving away. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for Carolyn?
I think that our newest friend should ought to.
I know who's making the motion.
Of course. That's what I know.
Move the motion.
No large print here that's been. Welcome, welcome.
We've resolved that Lisa Havner, First Selectman of the town of Simsbury, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an historic documents preservation grant.
Very well done, Chris.
I love reading.
I will second that. You got off easy on your first one. I was like this long.
Thank you for that. Would anybody like to second?
I seconded that.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Okay, moving on to item J. We have the public gathering permits recommendation for approval. We have Jerry Toner here. Before you, we have all the approvals, they are contingent upon securing all necessary health district permits prior to their event, the health district representative cannot be there at the public gathering meeting, so it is a contingent approval. Jerry?
We had, as in your submission, we held meetings on December 2nd and January 6th for these events. Representatives submitted completed applications. We had, as was indicated, we did not have representation from the health district, so that all approvals will be contingent upon each organization getting the necessary approvals. The health district is okay with that. There's no need to hold these events up. They've met all the requirements that we've asked. Public Safety has signed off on all, so they're all ready to go. Most of them are repeat events and we have a couple of new, I think, new events at the Performing Arts Center that were approved, but all are ready for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Jerry? Yes.
Just a quick one. Did we get the Iron Horse Half Marathon?
They are on there.
Stuff resolved?
Everything's resolved.
Of course, start time and all that, so everybody's happy?
Oh, right, yeah.
Thanks, Jerry.
I move that we accept these as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate. It takes a lot of staff time to review all these applications. They all come together. Jerry really instituted a great process where we bring everyone to one spot. Prior to that, people had to go to all the different department heads. So thank you for consolidating that. We very much appreciate it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Next business is item K, to assign one Old Bridge Road to Open Space Committee for potential uses. We did get, we've started to get letters about what some of the opportunities might be there. We have already had input from the Flower Bridge, who is obviously located adjacent to it and to some, to the Tourism Committee. So when I met with Open Space on Wednesday, they were amenable to taking this on as a evaluation process. They felt that the first thing that needed to be done was for the town engineer to speak with DEEP and possibly the Army Corps of Engineers to talk about what is permissible because it doesn't make sense to explore options that may not be permitted by law. So they felt that was the first process. They are very open to working with the Flower Bridge Committee, which has a keen interest in other interested groups. And as you see from the submission, they list some of the groups and of course, the public. It's a very exciting time. We do want to move this along quickly as we're beginning the budget process and we're cleaning up some of the, not cleaning up, but starting to prepare for some of the budget planning that we'll need to do. So we do have some money to begin the process, but wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen was in concurrence with this referral. So I'll open it up for questions.
What is their timeframe on this evaluation?
Well, I would like to get it done through the budget process. They do need information that they don't have control over.
I'm a little concerned over those government organizations being able to provide that information in a timely manner for the public.
Well, there are things we can control and things we can't. We can put it out there that we would like to get it done, or at least have a placeholder in place in case there's any expenditures above what we've put aside already. We do have some money to spend. We purchased it for $150,000, and there was an additional money for, you know, right, and other considerations, so.
And I would encourage them to revisit this in perhaps a staged process, because there's multiple ways we could do this. We don't have to build a structure.
Oh, absolutely.
We don't have to do it all at once. If we can create, you know, a secure facility, or take the building down, or whatever we're going to do, and that's phase one. And then phase two is rephasing the park and changing the parking and making it look better. You can tell I've been thinking about this a lot. And then phase three is.
I think you'll be coming to these meetings, all right.
So I would encourage them to, you know, to think about it in that manner. If they'd like our involvement, I, along the way.
You know, you would certainly be welcome at all the meetings, and they're very generous with their participation. They're looking to be an inclusive process. I'm looking for it to be inclusive. I think there's some exciting things. Most people are on the same page. We want it to be spectacular.
Yep. And then the other thing is, I think we did promise the Board to find its action in relatively short order, too.
We did.
So I'm sure they're going to remind us that during the budget process.
More get on it.
I get that reminder more than anyone else.
I'm sure you do.
So, all right. I think that makes sense as long as we're all moving this along as quickly as we can.
And we will, knowing that some of the considerations, we might not get the information we need because it's not always in our control. But we will do it with an eye towards expediting this, because we do know, and it will help with our budget planning as well.
We're talking a lot about the Open Space Committee tonight.
We are.
Certainly, it makes sense, the synergy of this, along with the Dewey and the other things that we're talking about. And as long as they feel confident they can turn all that stuff around, I think it makes sense to keep it all together.
Yeah, we're meeting eight days in a row. They can take this on.
Obviously, if they decide that this becomes a larger project, then they can, we can revisit. Nothing is set in stone. It's just a good place to start, because they've already started that evaluation. So we'll start there, and if we need to make a shift, we certainly can.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. I don't believe we need to vote on this. Do, okay, so we're in consensus on that. All right. Moving on to other business. I've enclosed liaison assignments. I took on all of Mary's assignments, and Chris took on all of mine. The only assignment I did not take from Mary is the Hartford Subcommittee, because I still have that conflict, so I gave that to Chris. That will remain with Chris and Nancy on that. Chris is a past chair of Public Safety and has served on the town boards of personnel and on the Board of Education's Personnel Subcommittee, so he's ready to go. He's not coming into this without substantial experience. We did have a citizen request, as you know, at the last public audience in December, for information on impeachment and recall processes in your packets, is a letter from council indicating that in Connecticut, there is not a process for either municipal governments. The letter can be found online, or members of the public can call my office, and we'd be happy to provide a letter for that. Also in your packet is a memorandum updating the town on proposed changes to the Connecticut DEEP stormwater regulations. We have Tom here. I'd like to thank Tom and Mary Glassman for their initiatives on this. This is a matter we will be following very closely because of the potential impact to the town. Basically, as originally proposed, the financial impact to Simsbury was estimated at $450,000. That is a substantial impact to our budget per year. It will require the town likely to hire two full-time staff to coordinate the task of all the administrative requirements that is within that. DEEP has given indications to multiple people that they are making significant amendments to the proposed permit, because there was such an outrage. There was a tremendous well of support against this, because it's just, it was an unfunded mandate. They were going to ask the towns to take on all these requirements. They have taken steps to remove some of the mandates, including street sweeping requirements and reducing catch basin cleaning, but we have not yet seen a new or revised proposal. We will be following this carefully. This was a major concern when I met with the Farmington Valley Collaborative members, who are also following this very carefully. And Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
The big thing just could be, at this point, whatever DEEP terms to be the appropriate new stormwater permit will take effect in January 2016, so it will have an impact on this budget. I think as we go through our budget hearings, we'll talk about the best way to handle that. Quite honestly, the original permit as proposed, even that $450,000 number was pretty light. Some of the requirements were just outrageous. And we've been pushing, as Lisa said, to be reasonable. I think, you know, if you look at some of the correspondence we wrote, that Simsbury cares about the environment, but there's a difference between caring about the environment and sweeping a street 12 times per year. We want to be practical and realistic in how we go about it.
Especially since you've done such a great job with reducing our sand input, and we've actually reduced the need for street cleaning in Simsbury. So it's an initiative that you began, and appreciative for that.
We also reached out, since they're located here in town, to the Farmington River Watershed. They were also supportive of our approach, that we're not against the environment, but we're against unfunded mandates to do things that are not going to have a positive impact on our local streams and waterways.
Have they given any indication of when they're going to put out an amended proposal?
No.
And unfortunately, the way it currently stands, there is no public comment period to whatever proposal they issue at this point.
Although, they have heard from many people loud and clear. This has been a huge clarion call from municipalities. CCM, I think, is on top of this as well.
CCM actually has intervenor status, as does Council of Small Towns.
Cost. Cost.
Just so I understand, when the permit comes up, they would renew our permit or deny our permit to dispose of stormwater? Is that what happens? That's how they hold it over our head?
That's correct.
So we can't say no?
Right.
Right now, the sad fact is that under the existing permit, which Simsbury is in compliance with, the vast majority of towns are not still in full compliance with it. So one of the arguments that was made at the legislative hearings, if we're not able to, or the bulk of towns are still not able to make all of these current requirements, and yet you raise the bar higher as opposed to reaching out to finding out what are the obstacles for these towns to meet requirements.
Interesting. So there's towns that aren't compliant, so what happens to a town that's not in compliance?
They run the risk of either stating, in some cases, federal court orders to force their hand as it comes up on the particular issues that they're not in compliance with.
All right. I won't ask any more questions. Can you know where I'm going on this one?
Yeah, no, but it is probably will be one of the most significant budget impacts had it gone through us initially proposed. So we are following this very carefully. I'd like to welcome, we have members of the Veterans Memorial Committee here. Welcome to you gentlemen for being here. We, I'm in receipt of a letter, which you have copies of, from the headmaster of Westminster School, whose name is William Philip. Westminster, I just want to mention, has been a great partner with the town for many years. As a private school, they are not required to pay taxes for the school, but they have very generously, over at least the last 10 years, I only went back 10 years, made significant and substantial payments to the town voluntarily. So we appreciate that they have done that, and we, and how much they do for our community. They do tremendous amount of volunteer work. In the letter, they, this past year, they made a contribution to the town of $120,000 that was given in July 2014 and was placed in the general fund. They did put in a request that if there is a gap in the funding that the veterans need to raise, that they would like some of that money that they donate to the town to the general fund be transferred to help close the gap. Their target number, the veterans, was 175,000, and we're closing in on that. Right now, what we have out there is that the veterans are still engaged in fundraising, and we are enthusiastic and appreciative of that, and encourage people to contact the veterans if people still would like to donate. And the town of Simsbury, as you know, has applied for a steep grant. We're grateful to Representative Hampton and Senator Witcos for their support of that project. We do not yet know the status of the steep grant. There was a meeting today, but we did not get an update on that, so I'm not sure where that is. So because we have two unknowns out there, the result of their fundraising and whether we will receive the steep grant, and I ran this five len, and he was comfortable with this, and I also ran it by the headmaster, and he was also comfortable with this, I am recommending the Board of Selectmen wait to determine the need and the amount before we take a vote to transfer the money to this project. So just until we see where everything falls out. So I just wanted to give you information now, I'm not asking for a transfer at this point. And we hope to have more information from Representative Hampton and Senator Witcos, and hopefully in the next few weeks, so we'll have a better idea of where we are.
So it'll fall nicely within the budget.
Absolutely. Yes, Len. Sure.
Len Lanza, Two Fire Brick Lane, speaking as a representative of the Simsbury Veterans Memorial Committee. It was back on October 13th when I sent the marketing package to Westminster School, including all of the materials and what our objective was. We haven't heard anything up until this point, and I'm grateful that they've reached out and are making this offer. I also, by the way, as an aside, I'm getting a big kick out of listening to your lamenting the budget schedule that you have coming up in the next couple of months. It reminds me that during my 55 years in public school education, I had the opportunity to develop and present the Boards of Education, Boards of Selectmen, Boards of Finance, Communities, 42 budgets.
So you beat us.
Fair enough.
I know the process, including going back for additional appropriations. And I say that because part of what I'd like to convey tonight relates to budget. It's important to recognize that what the gap is tonight is different from what the gap will be in two weeks at the meeting on the 26th, and I'll be happy to report where we are at that point. As of tonight, the gap is in the neighborhood of $47,000. We have a wide variety of commitments that have not been received yet, and those commitments vary from day to day, but it looks as if we're going in a good direction. The results of the $150,000 construction cost was a result of significant cuts to the approved design details that were approved originally. Some of the items, just to give you an example, some of the items, and in developing those 42 budgets, I continually use the same statements. Putting together a budget is relatively easy, okay? It's taking it apart is the killer. And that's what we had to do in part. And some of those cuts involve the backs on the benches with the service logos. We wound up putting the logos on the ground because it was cheaper, and you know what happens to the logos on the ground? They're not very visible. They're covered all winter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the benches with the backs on them, of course, would be more comfortable. Another item was the concrete under the pavers, or sand under the pavers instead of the concrete that were in the original specifications. Makes a big difference in the base. We went from having granite separating the pavers to having concrete separating the pavers. And we eliminated a lot of additional engraving that was intended to describe the intent of the memorial. Those items alone represent $48,000, okay? If we exceed our stated goal of $175,000, those are the kinds of areas that we're going to be looking at, okay? All of the above increase the longevity and aesthetic value of the memorial and decrease the amount of maintenance required. We look forward to reporting back to you on the 26th, and we're grateful for the relationship that we've had with, working with the Board of Selectmen up to this point.
Well, we're happy to support you, and we thank Westminster for their donations, substantial donations. We do use that in our budget. This does help with the taxes, and we're appreciative that they do this voluntarily, and that they view this, as we all do, a significant and important monument for the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts. Okay, so that's, this will come to us again in the next, again, no decision tonight. And Len, if you could just get a written summary of an update so that we can provide that to the board, that would be wonderful.
We'd be happy.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to appointments and resignations. You have before you to accept the resignation of Kevin Schultz with our thanks as a regular member of the Simsbury Farms Complex Committee effective December 27, 2014.
I'll move that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Kevin Schultz for your service. We appreciate it. Moving on to acceptance of the minutes, we have our regular meeting minutes of December 8, 2014. There has been, Tom, would you describe the change in the rules on the minutes? Because there has been a slight change.
When you, if you choose to amend what's already been provided for you, that's fine, and amended minutes will be filed. But according to the town clerk, the minutes that are filed within the timeframe right after the meeting are, in fact, the minutes. So what you're really doing is, to the extent you make changes tonight, you're amending the minutes.
So we would need a motion to amend the minutes.
That's correct.
Recommend the changes, and then to adopt the amended minutes. So there's a slight change in the way we've done things.
And in fact, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no.
But if, in fact, there were no changes, then you wouldn't have to take any action on the middle.
That's right. If we didn't act at all on the minutes, they would be stated.
That's correct.
So it's a slightly different.
So we don't have to accept them anyway.
Correct. And we will be changing that on the, the agenda. But I did want to clarify that it is a new rule out there. I guess in some ways, if the minutes are perfect, it doesn't require further action. But does anyone have any changes that they would like us to consider to, I guess we'd have to amend the agenda to consider a motion to amend the minutes? Does anyone?
If you feel the need to amend. Does anybody really want to do that?
If there are any significant changes that feel they need to be made, we'll go through the process, but I'll just ask if there are. So then we do not need to accept the minutes they are as standing? I will look for updates. I'm pretty sure, Chris, you don't have a Personnel Subcommittee update. Are there any other updates at this point?
There are.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm really excited about this one. Jerry was kind enough to prepare a memo for us after, and forgive me, I don't have it in printed form, but I do have it on my, I do. Mike has it in printed form. I do not. We've been meeting for a number of months now. We being the Special Revenue Fund exit committee, as you will, members of the Board of Finance, members of Culture Parks and Rec, Jerry, obviously Finance Director Tom Cook has attended some of these, Mike and myself, with the charge of coming back to you all before the budget process with our recommendation on how to get the revenue fund, the Simsbury Farms Revenue Fund, in a position where it's self-sustaining for a couple reasons. One, we can't have that uncertainty as we go back into the budget process every year, because we have to take the money out of reserves every year to make that fund whole. And two, revenue funds themselves, special revenue funds, are not supposed to be negative. They're supposed to be neutral or positive every year. So this was an important goal of ours to do this. So at this time, we, I think we met at least a half dozen times or more, and had some really great discussion on our vision for what we think Simsbury Farms can continue to be for us. Obviously, it's a phenomenal asset for this town, for this community, and then includes the golf courts, the paddle, the pool, everything. We think at this point that a $90,000 subsidy makes sense to come back to the Board of Selectmen. That's actually less than what the Board of Selectmen budget used to subsidize. So that fund is, you know, doing better than it had in the past, but that is a main piece of our recommendation.
So one of the things that I would like information on, just so that I understand a little better.
Yep.
Is that $90,000, is that, is that a change in the services? Is that because the positions are split? I mean, where is this 90, how did you come up with that number? What is, how does that affect our employees or the, where does this land?
So we've got an historical breakout of where the subsidy was. There was a significant portion of staff that was paid for formally in the Board of Selectmen budget. Over the years, the allocation changed, and more was pushed to the revenue fund.
I know. My question is, why? And why is it coming back? I just, just.
Because quite honestly, Jerry Toner's time is in the room, obviously, but is not necessarily spent down there as much as the allocation was. It's gotten out of whack as things have changed.
So if we could get a little more detail on that as we move to the budget process.
Absolutely, and that was the intent.
I think that would be helpful for the public to
Yep.
...understand the reason for the change, because it is a, moving into the operating budget does, will impact our budget, and it could potentially be a tax increase. It's.
Absolutely. And let me just make sure I clarify. So we have three choices. We can do nothing, which I don't think anybody wants to do. We can do some sort of subsidy, some sort of shift back reallocation, whatever you want to call it, which is what this board is recommending.
Right.
And the third thing is, again, we could continue to ask for revenue changes otherwise, and if the fund does continue to fail, then it all comes back to our budget.
That's right. When a special revenue fund does not do what it's set out to do, often the remedy is to bring the full fund into the operating budget.
Which we're not recommending at this time. We think that, we think that the Culture Parks and Rec Board in particular with Jerry has done a great job of controlling costs. We asked them through the last two budget process to look at every penny and make sure that they were incurring as much savings as possible. They've done that. Jerry's actually provided us with an update where their actually, expenses are down this year already, so I think he's going to share more with that during our budget process. And revenues are trending slightly higher. We actually had some golf revenue in December, because it was so nice. So we've got, we've got some good luck going, obviously some good management down there between what Culture Parks and Rec and Jerry have done, and they've pledged to us as well to continue to revisit the fees, to continue to make sure that those are in line, so that it's not just the Board of Selectmen and the taxpayers incurring this. This is all hands on deck to solve this, to solve this challenge.
And I just want to recognize, Jerry, some of this was created, made by decisions, not you.
Absolutely.
So we are looking to rectify a situation that was put in place to try and solve a problem. We tried it. I appreciate your effort in doing that, but I do want to make the point that we are fixing a problem that wasn't created by Jerry, but we're trying to create, fix a problem for a problem that wasn't created by Jerry, but we're trying to create, fix a problem for the whole town. And I want to appreciate the Subcommittee that looked at this. Just details so that, for transparency and to the Board, so that we can understand the data behind it would be helpful.
Absolutely. And there's nothing for anybody to accept tonight, obviously.
Right.
We're through the budget process. That's, that's where the, the money will come in. But again, wanted to just get it on everybody's radar. It does, obviously, it sounds like a large chunk, and, but the Board of Finance has been part of this discussion as well. They understand it's coming through, so...
Everybody understands the situation. This is not about blame. It's about fixing a problem that really nobody created.
Absolutely.
It's just a problem based on this accounting and structuring. So, I do want to make that point and really emphasize that point.
Absolutely.
And to thank the Parks and Rec, who have assisted Jerry with this and their efforts on that. It's been, I think, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Does any, anyone else have comments on this? At this point, there's not a vote. It's just an update.
Yeah, it's a point of reference, Lisa. We, we actually, this year, had to, if you will, subsidize Culture and Parker Rec for $200,000.
Yes. Yes. I remember.
This is a reduction from there, and, and it was, I don't quite remember the phrase that was used at our meeting, but it was some shared pain and suffering. Nobody walked out of there completely happy with all the decisions.
Well, it's a tough situation. It's hard job to solve it. And so, that involves compromise, and involves working with...
Everybody did.
Accounting and trying to, what is the best thing for the town. So, I appreciate everyone's initiative in analyzing this. I think you, I'm looking forward to seeing the details behind it, but I definitely understand the general theory behind it, and appreciate your, and I believe it was Mike and Sean who served on the Subcommittee. So, thank you for representing the Board of Selectmen on that. We appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely. No problem.
Any other questions on that?
I have one further little update.
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we're on updates.
I just wanted to, for anybody who might be watching this, if you are a parent or a family with a person with disabilities, at the State Capitol on Thursday, starting at 11:00 a.m., is Family Hearing Day. Our legislators, including our own John Hampton, will be hosting a hearing, which is open to the public, and families of people with disabilities are welcome to speak. They are going to focus on the waiting list for group homes and for other services provided by the Department of Developmental Services. So, if you have an interest in that, or would like to submit written testimony or testify in person, I would certainly encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else have an update?